Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting of Thursday, March 27, 2025. I'm Julie Daigle, the Ward Four City Councillor and City Council President. Councillors with us tonight include councillors Turco, Gould, Gamache, Higgins, Manning-Martin, Welton, McGinn, Rozignol, and Melville. Absent tonight is councillor Peach. Public participation to this meeting is provided in person and remotely via Zoom in accordance with Mass General Law. The Zoom link can be found on the city website. This meeting is also being televised and recorded by PBD TV and the city council's denographer. Please join me for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. You heard the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. If there are no objections, I'd like to go out of order and take item 7C, appointments, first. Seeing no objections, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening to you. Good evening, councillors. Hope everybody's doing well. Very happy today to bring forward some appointments to some key city boards. You'll see the list provided to you. Mr. Rizzo and Mr. Hardy are longtime volunteers for the city, both very valuable for the different boards. Wanted to bring them forward for a reappointment, but also very happy to bring on a new appointment to you, to the liquor licensing board, which plays a critical role in our city in a wide variety of ways. We've been shorthanded on the board, and I did want to recognize and thank Barry Sinewitz, who was a longtime city councillor, then a longtime member of the liquor licensing board, really provided some exceptional service to the city and wanted to thank him publicly. But I wanted to bring forward tonight as a new member, Maureen Murphy, who is a very capable attorney, who works in a wide variety of legal aspects. Her background is impressive, and we'll be able to add an important legal background to the discussions that are undertaken by the liquor licensing board. Maureen comes from a very well-known, well-regarded family in the city, the Murphy family, who many of you know. Certainly they do tremendous work at Tilly's Farm, but have also been a part of a number of city initiatives and city events. And Maureen is carving her path and wanted to give back to the city and volunteer, and I think she'll be an excellent addition with her background and her ties to the city and her care and concern for the city's future, to be a part of helping out the liquor licensing board, what I think would be excellent for our city and for that board. And I wanted to bring Maureen forward. She is here today, Madam President, and maybe can come up and say a few words, but very happy to bring her forward to an appointment to the liquor licensing board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Would Ms. Murray like to, Murphy like to come up?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bettencourt, and thank you for, PBD City Council, for having me here tonight. As Mayor Bettencourt said, I'm a lifelong PBD resident. I recently purchased my first home in Ward Two, and I would love to give back to my community. And this is an excellent opportunity, joining the licensing board, and I would be honored to do so.
Thank you very much. Councillor Gould.
Thank you, Madam President. Maureen, the list is long as how involved the Murphy and Conway family have been in the city of PBD, and I'm sure you'll do a fabulous job continuing that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gould. Councillor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. For me, one of the saddest days was when Maureen finished law school, because we lost our favorite babysitter at the Welton household. However, we're so thrilled that Maureen has become such an exceptional young woman, not only as an attorney, but somebody who's so dedicated to our community. So, Maureen, thank you so much for what you do and for your family, for everything you do for PBD. We're super excited to have you in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Welton. Any other councillors? I will entertain a motion while we have Ms. Murphy before us, to receive and approve 7C. Councillor Manning-Martin.
Sure, I will make that motion, but with such, I would also like to recognize that Mike Rizzo and Mr. Hardy have been volunteers in their capacity, one for the Community Preservation and one for Conservation Commission, for as long as I can remember. They're solid, solid public servants to the city volunteering, so I wanted to commend them too, and welcome you. We're happy to have you aboard. So, with that, I'll have a motion to approve all three positions as listed on 7C, and approve the recommendation of the mayor. So moved.
You heard the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, this is to approve all three appointments on item 7C, Michael Rizzo, Frances Hardy, and Maureen Murphy. Roll call, vote, please.
Councillor Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Mary Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
McGinn.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to zero.
Congratulations. Welcome to the licensing board. Thank you, everyone. We are going to move on to hearings, and the first before us is for a special permit for Pasquale 3147A Summit Street. Would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, March 27, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Elwigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, and remotely via Zoom on the application from Pasquale Tedesco III, 171 Boston Street, Salem, Mass, for a special permit requesting to allow office/shop of contractor towing business and truck service and repair with outdoor storage within fenced area at 147A Summit Street. PBD Mass has filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under City Calendar on the homepage, or contact the city clerk's office. PBD City Council councillor Julie Kay Daigle, City Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I see that the petitioner has approached the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and give us a description of what you'd like to do.
Thank you. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in PBD Mass, and I'm here on behalf of Pasquale Tedesco III. He is the owner of the property at 147A Summit Street. He owns that property as 147A Summit Street Holdings, LLC. He would like to, he has purchased the property, and we'd like to bring the Tedesco towing headquarters to PBD, along with the ability to repair and maintain a fleet. We have, the Tediscos operate out of five locations, Salem, New Hampshire, Salem, Mass, Revere, I'm sorry, East Boston, Roxbury, and now PBD. The hope is that they're, the information that I'd like to provide to you is that they have 70 trucks in their fleet. However, this will not become a storage facility for that fleet, but instead will be the corporate headquarters, and there may be some eight or so vehicles that might await dispatch. There will be no maintenance or truck repair of anybody other than Tedesco's trucks. There will be no storage of damaged vehicles that, or trucks that have been picked up off the highway. A special permit is to allow for the office and shop of the towing business with vehicle repair and certain outdoor storage within a fenced-in area. We are in receipt of a number of memos from various departments. Among them, Department of Public Services has indicated that we need MDC gas separators throughout the parking lot for any runoff. That we are aware of and willing to, more than willing to comply with. It's actually state regulation. And there was an unpaid tax bill that we have a receipt for that's been paid. Other memorandums that you have are from the Conservation Commission with which we filed. We filed in the form of a minor permit. A minor permit can be, can be approved outside of a meeting, inasmuch as this particular area of Summit Street is located in a FEMA floodplain. The Conservation Administrator has placed the matter on the agenda for next week for their approval. She is recommending approval, and I think that that covers any of the memorandums we've received. We have a willingness to accept the contents of the memorandums as needing to be complied with, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. My client, I believe, is going to join us, if necessary, by Zoom, inasmuch as he's out of town this evening, and apologizes for not being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Kelty. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this application? Seeing none. Is there anyone on the Zoom platform that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? The applicant is available on Zoom for the record. Councillor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. There was a typo on the application. This is actually Ward One.
That confused me. Thank you. Councillor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. As councillor McGinn said, this other side of the street is Summit Street, so this is kind of like our Ward One and Ward Two Mason-Dixon line. But had a chance to also talk to councillor McGinn as well. We've not heard from any neighbors that are in opposition to this. I've had a chance to speak with Mr. Tedesco, also Attorney Kelty. A few things that Attorney Kelty mentioned that I just want to kind of reiterate here is that there'll be no towing of wrecked vehicles onto the property and no work, no work done to those wrecked vehicles. It's really going to be, any service will be for the fleet that Mr. Tedesco owns and operates. You know, a benefit for our community that, you know, I'm particularly interested with this being placed there is the proximity to high-traffic areas throughout South PBD Centennial and the proximity to the 128 as well. So, I'm in favor of this. I think it'll be a good thing for that area, and it'll be nice for us to have that readily available should there be emergency services needed from Tedesco Towing. As Attorney Kelty mentioned, with PBD Conservation Commission, because it is located within a federal, or excuse me, FEMA floodplain, that has triggered what would typically be approved from the Conservation Commissioner, that's triggered the necessity for it to go back in front of the Conservation Commission. So, for that reason, that's why that's scheduled out. I understand typically through Rule 17 that we have everything done ahead of time. This one's kind of a little bit of a different situation here, so I would be recommending to move forward and approve the special permit this evening pending the Concom decision, because it seems more clerical than actually, you know, a significant issue since it's been addressed. The other departmental concerns that Attorney Kelty went over, you know, the taxes have been paid, the Health Department requests, the conditions in here are to mitigate the noxious emissions and odors. Public Services is to have an MDC separator for any spill from any, you know, oil or anything that's there. And then, the other condition was the six-foot-high impervious fence to close out everything that's going to be there. And as I spoke to the petitioner, he intends to wrap that so that, you know, no one has to look at tow trucks, you know, if, you know, none of the neighbors have to look at that. So, he intends to clean up the site. I think it's a good use, and I think, you know, all of the conditions that have been put forth by our departments, both the petitioner and Attorney Kelty have assured us that they're willing to abide by those conditions and have those as part of the special permit. So, I'll open it up to fellow councillors if there's any questions, either for myself or Attorney Kelty. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other councillor? Councillor Rozignol, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Attorney Kelty. On where it says total number of vehicles to be parked on-site, and it says 14, I'm assuming that is basically the tow trucks themselves. And I know they come in various sizes. Are any of those going to be oversized? Like, what are the size and scale?
No, there's no likelihood of the oversized vehicle being there overnight. However, if one of those oversized vehicles required maintenance or repair, yes, and they do fit in the bays.
Just for clarification, so the plan is not for any oversized vehicles on property unless they're being maintained?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councillor Rozignol. Councillor Turco.
Thank you, Madam President. Jack may be able to answer this better for me. Obviously, in support of this permit, I just wanted to point out, I think, Jack, seven years this property's been vacant? Is it six or seven years? Do you know, since the last time something, the...
Jack Padra operated as Beacon Electric for about the last, at least five or six. Yeah, you're right. There had been no tenant there. Had been another electric company when Beacon moved up to the Centennial Park, but that did not work out, and it became vacant again. So, it has been vacant quite a while.
Thank you. The reason I ask is just, you know, in support, it's good to get this back on the tax rolls. You know, we had one of these come up before us several years ago, which was AAA up in Lakeland Park, and I don't think we've, we have had any issues with AAA in that area. I think Mr. Tedesco services the PBD area as well as contracts under the state, so it makes sense to have him right there at 128 in Summit Street, and I'm glad to have the Tedesco family here in PBD. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Turco. Any other councillors? Councillor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to close public hearing.
You heard the motion? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councillor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I would move to approve special permit from Pasquale Tedesco III, 171 Boston Street, Salem, Massachusetts, for a special permit requesting to allow office space, shop of contractor towing business, and truck services and repair with outdoor storage within fenced area at 147A Summit Street, pending all departmental requests that have been outlined in the special permit application, and also the approval of a minor permit application or RDA from the Conservation Commission, with all conditions placed by the Conservation Commission also followed. So moved.
Could we specify those conditions a little bit tighter?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you, Councillor Welton.
No problem. Thank you. Condition being from the PBD Conservation Commission, well, the Conservation Commission we'll get to after, from the Health Department that Mr. Tedesco, if repairs are being made with auto-body work, must ensure that all proper engineering controls are in place to prevent the release of particulate odor or other emissions to the environment. From Public Services, that all MDC-trapped containment systems are in place for motor vehicle spills and prevention inside the building, per codes. And from the Building Inspector Department, that the property located at 147A Summit Street, note Section 4.2.6, which if granted requires a six-foot site impervious fence to surround any exterior outdoor storage areas. And finally, with Conservation Commission, as we noted, they have filed a minor permit application, which will be heard on April 9. So, the approval of this special permit request is pending Conservation Commission's approval, with all conditions being followed from the Conservation Commission as well. So moved.
Thank you, Councillor Welton. You heard the motion? Any discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Councillor Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Kelty. Thank you, Councillor Welton. We are moving on to 4B in hearings, the entertainment license application. Would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, March 27, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Elwigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, and remotely via Zoom on the application from MJ Voto LLC, DBA Brody's Pub, 10 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, requesting an entertainment license for the use of non-live entertainment, specifically television and satellite radio, and live entertainment, specifically acoustic live music, one to three people, karaoke, comedy show, and trivia at said 10 Lowell Street, PBD Mass. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under Calendar on the homepage, or contact the city clerk's office. PBD City Council councillor Julie Kay Daigle, City Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The petitioner has approached the podium. Please repeat your name and address for the record, and give us a brief description of your application.
Thank you. John Kelty, on behalf of Michael Voto. Michael owns 10 Lowell Street in PBD Mass as Brody's Pub. The ownership entity at that premises is MJ Voto LLC. We, Michael Voto is here this evening. This, in my estimation, is a truly exciting project. As exciting as it was to present a tow truck company... As exciting as it was to present a tow truck company, this seems to do a little bit more for me. The building is hopefully going to be completed on or about May 1. I believe that all of you who have had the opportunity to see the building, which is, I think, a beautiful addition to the downtown portion of PBD, there is still work to be done on the exterior. We're very close to furnishing, and restaurant equipment has come in, the elevator's in, scaffolding has been removed. The dental work, for lack, that decorative treatment of the, of certain portions of the front and sides is being wrapped up. And I think personally that Joe Bettencourt, the architect for Michael, did a wonderful job of designing a building that would look part of the square. It would sort of emulate portions of PBD Square. That's one of the more difficult things to do in PBD. When you say that we're, you know, we want it to look like the PBD Downtown, which part of the downtown? So I think that our very central portion, which is the Uchee Building, and the courthouse in the City Hall, I think that this becomes a very welcome addition. My application is for an amendment to our entertainment license. We've indicated that we have now more square footage. I amended my initial application by changing my hours, and I have also changed the number of amplifiers that we're going to have on the premises. We had a meeting with Counselor McGinn in which we were able to tour the premises, and there was a discussion of some conditions, which I believe will be presented before this meeting is adjourned. And we are amenable to those conditions. And looking forward, we've indicated that our hours of live entertainment were amended to request 10 AM to 11 PM, Monday to Wednesday, 10 AM to 12 AM, and Thursday through Saturday, and 10 AM to 10 PM on Sunday. There really is not a full game plan with respect to when and which evenings live entertainment would be had. Predominantly, it is expected that live entertainment would be provided in conjunction with somebody coming to the premises and booking the premises, that second floor, independent of the first floor. So we're happy, Michael and I are both happy to answer any questions that you may have, and that, we hope you vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Attorney Keltie. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Is there anyone in this audience that would like to speak in opposition of this application? Seeing none. Is there anyone on the Zoom platform that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none. Is there anyone on the Zoom platform that would like to speak in opposition? Counsel McGinn. Oh, Mr. Rogério, would you? Here's your chance, Mr. Rogério. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Last time I pressed the button, I went, you know. First of all, my name's Joseph Rogério. I own the funeral home across the street, and I just have to say what a beautiful building Michael put up, tremendously. My only concern is when you have an awake, and you don't know when you're going to have a wake, and you don't know, you know, what's going on, it's just the situation of the windows. You know, what goes on in the building is none of my business, but what goes on outside of the building and, you know, can hear into the parking lot of my funeral home and into the funeral home, it's just something I'm concerned about. I think it's been amended. I think it's been taken care of, but I hope it is because it would just be a real deterrent for me to have people coming into a wake and having music as they go out and come in. And I don't think anyone here would like it, and I know, you know, it's just a thing that I try to do the most I can for the city, and I just ask in that one favor to, if we could just look into the fact that the windows stay closed, and we'll go from there. Other than that, Mike Ray project. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. As you heard from Attorney Keltie, before us, we have the entertainment license application was modified by a separate communication that was submitted by the applicant's attorney on the 19th of February. As Attorney Keltie indicated, I've been in contact with Mr. Voto and with Attorney Keltie, and have toured the very dramatically renovated building. I agree, it's come out very nicely. Based on what was shared with me, my understanding is that the general plan is to have occasional live entertainment, not, it's not intended to be an everyday activity, and this would include acoustic music, comedy, karaoke, and trivia. Non-live entertainment would be played most of the time only in the background. I've also, we just heard from Mr. Rogério, I've been in touch with him in advance, as he is a very, his business is in close proximity, and I agree that the proximity of the Rogério Funeral Home is a concern, the potential of this being disruptive to grieving family needs to be avoided, and I think, I think we can do that. And to prevent that, and you heard that from Mr. Rogério, his request that the windows stay closed, the applicant has agreed to do that, keep the windows closed during any live entertainment offering, and they've agreed to accept that as a condition. Just, I just wanted to mention, because, you know, I think for a period of time, Brody's backyard had been in operation, and people saw that and may confuse what's going on here tonight with that activity. And I just, to avoid any confusion, I want to be clear that this application and license, if it's issued, has nothing to do with the city-owned outdoor space. All entertainment is to take place inside the building. As the modified application indicates, live entertainment would end Monday through Wednesday at 11 PM, and midnight on Thursday through Saturday, 10 PM on Sunday. Counselors might also note in the package, there was a communication from the Collectors' Department, their response indicating there was a small balance of personal property tax, I think it was just over $100, that was due, and I'm told by Attorney Keltie that that has been paid, correct?
Yes, it has.
With that, I am in support of this application, and I would open it up to other counselors at this time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel McGinn. Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, when we first got this application, I did have some concerns, but I can see that Counsel McGinn has addressed the vagueness of the first application quite well. And I shared Mr. Rogério's concerns about music affecting his business funeral home, but also the proximity of Brody's is also, not only is it, does it about the funeral home, but there's a church in the area, and the main entrance to City Hall is directly across the street. The School Department headquarters is directly across the street, too. So I did have a lot of concerns about the type of entertainment and the time of the entertainment, but that largely has been addressed by Counsel McGinn, and I appreciate that. The only other concern that I have is the 10 AM start time. And the 10 AM start time is a concern for me because of the surrounding businesses in the area. So that's not as largely a concern as it was before, but that is the only thing that I kind of would want to discuss. But also, what alleviated some of that, too, is that it's acoustic music and not bands or drums or electric guitars and things like that. So that's important, too. So I am a little concerned about the 10 AM start time. However, I know Counsel McGinn mentioned, and we all know Brody's, it's really not a place, unless you're changing your whole style to have, like, loud music or large crowds, that's what I don't want at 10 AM or even, you know, before noon and things like that, because there's business going on down there that would disturb, and that's not an image I wanted to put forward. But since, could you entertain saying acoustic only? Could you humor me saying acoustic only so that people don't say, well, we have an entertainment license, and next thing you know, there's a band? I don't want that. And then, that's the only thing. And then 10 AM, I mean, you folks could talk me out of it, I'm sure, but that's my only other sticking point, is the 10 AM start time with live entertainment. That's all. Those are my remarks. Thank you.
Counsel McGinn.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just, I think your comment was to the applicant, not me, but I just, I just wanted to point out that the meeting notice itself, which will be part of the motion, does specifically indicate acoustic. So I just wanted to make sure that you know that that will be in the motion.
Does it say acoustic only?
It does not, but we can, we can certainly ask the applicant if they're agreeable to that, adding that one word, "only."
The petitioner is discussing that question, Attorney Keltie? Would you like to answer that?
What was the question? It's simply, simply to add the word "only," acoustic only, so that there is a misinterpretation down the road, and we'll have a live five-piece band.
And the 10 AM live is not really an important, we could go to 11 or even 12, if that was a concern.
I'll split the difference with you, and I appreciate you offering 11. I think 11 would be fine. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. During your presentation, Attorney Keltie, did you say that that second-floor space would be available for rent?
For rent?
Yes.
No, if a party, if somebody was on the anniversary, retirement, something, they could actually take the second floor, but we don't expect that. It's not really built out as a function room. It's not really intended to be a function room. In general, it's intended to be additional dining, and the expectation is on the second floor would be dining. But that does not preclude somebody from calling, saying, I want 25 people, can we have the second floor? And we're going to have a acoustical guitar, so. But it's not per se out there for rent as a function hall, no.
Through you, Madam President. So if I went to pick a restaurant, doesn't matter, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to ask to bring my own entertainment into that restaurant. So that, to me, is really kind of leaning a little bit towards a function area.
I disagree in the sense that people call all the time and ask for a section of the restaurant.
So I'll agree with that, a section of the restaurant to have a birthday party, to have cake, but once you stop bringing your own entertainment, and that, to me, is a significant issue, because if I want to bring a rock band, and I don't know that...
I can't have rock bands because I'm acoustic.
My point is, is I don't think that that should be allowed via this entertainment license at all. That's my opinion. That's the jumping off point. Secondly, I have a real difficult time supporting entertainment on the second floor. I know, Counsel McGinn, you've done a fantastic job kind of mitigating this. When we put this out as an RFP, it was for three floors, and it was the first floor to be restaurant, and then two floors above that to be office space. That's what we sent the RFP out as. That's what we should be getting back. If we were going to get more than that, then that's what we should have put the RFP out for, and we should have got a much bigger return on the RFP. All of that, we can't change. But the usage and its intent was a restaurant on the first floor, and office space on the two above floors, and I do think that moving forward, there will be a significant detriment to the funeral power behind it with any sort of live entertainment there. So I really have some significant issues with this as it's constituted. I'll be perfectly honest with you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Rosignol. Counselor Melville.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just going to stay focused on the entertainment license we have before us, but the, you just done what Counselor Rosignol brought up, there's a big difference between promoting events and then having, let's say, an Irish political St. Patrick's Day event where the restaurant might be hosting, and they might get an acoustical band there. There's all sorts of prohibitions on promoting events without certain permitting, and that's outside the context of this particular entertainment permit. So, you know, just with regards to the actual permit itself, I would just want to, you know, Counsel McGinn identified many of the issues I saw, but when it comes to the actual, you know, function versus a non-function, every number of restaurants downtown, you could theoretically rent five or six tables if you're having an anniversary, retirement party. And depending on the entertainment permit they have, whether it be live or non-live, you know, you could ask and request maybe if it's in an Italian restaurant, a certain type of music or something of that nature. So it's, there's a big difference. If there were promoting events, that's a whole other deal, and that's actually, that would be handled differently. That's not something typically that would, I don't think it would be part of this particular thing. So I'm supportive. I appreciate, you know, the feedback from the counselors. It's important to talk about it this way. It's going to be in a very visible part of the city, and I appreciate all the work that's been done to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Madam President. Just, I'll only touch on it briefly, just to not leave Counsel Rosignol on an island. I think that we, you know, we all know that there were some issues here that a lot of us were caught off guard with and surprised by, but here we are today. With regard to the entertainment license, and, you know, sticking to that, Counsel, I, well, I understand your concern. I had the same concerns as Counsel Manning with the windows open upstairs. I'm glad that that's been resolved. Hopefully, that's a condition on the permit, Counsel McGinn. But as far as limiting what Mr. Voto can do for entertainment on the second level, I do think that there's times when, you know, you may have a get-together that you asked to bring in a solo singer for whatever, a fifth birthday party, or maybe a DJ. So I don't really want to limit Mr. Voto what he can do on the upstairs, so I wouldn't be in favor of any restriction on that, but I just wanted to say that you and I agree about the prior issues, but, you know, as Counsel Melville said, here we are. It's the entertainment license, and, you know, unfortunately, the ship has sailed on some of the other issues. But thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Turco. Any other counselors? Before I turn to Counsel McGinn, I just want to echo all of my colleagues, and thank you, Mr. Rogério, for speaking up, because you've invested a lot of money into your business and knowing that entertainment was on... your business and knowing that entertainment was on the first floor, and there are changes, and I know Mr. Voto has invested a lot of money. So I believe, this is the crown jewel of the city, and we want to all get along, and we don't want to have a flag raising and too much music, and I think, and I want to believe that we're all going to be respectful and work together, and if there's a problem, I am very pro-business, and I'm sure we can all work it out. So I do support this, because I want to see Mr. Voto do well, I want to see Mr. Roggerio do well, and all we can do is communicate and work together. Councilwoman McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilwoman McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve the application from MJ Voto LLC, doing business as Brody's Pub, 10 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., requesting an entertainment license for the use of non-live entertainment, specifically television and satellite radio, and live entertainment, specifically acoustic only, live music, one to three people, karaoke, comedy show, and trivia at said 10 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. with the following conditions: hours of non-live entertainment, 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Monday to Saturday; 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Sunday, or as otherwise stipulated in a Sunday license to be obtained from the mayor's office; hours of live entertainment, up to three performers and up to one amplifier; 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday to Wednesday; 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Thursday to Saturday; and 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sunday, or as otherwise stipulated in a Sunday license to be obtained from the mayor's office; windows to be closed during any live entertainment offering; owners will make ongoing reasonable efforts to prevent noise from becoming disruptive to area residents and abutting businesses. So moved.
You heard the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselor Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rosignol.
No.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries, nine to one.
Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Attorney Keltie and Mr. Voto.
Thank you very much, councilors.
Moving on to reports of committees. Ad hoc Committee on Municipal Golf Course/ Skating Rink Committee. Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That committee, which is a mouthful, met at the rink, the skating rink, on March 15th, which was a Saturday. So I very much appreciate those that could attend, and especially Mr. Gingras, on a Saturday, came and joined us, and the, we took a tour of the skating rink, which was done by the manager, Paul, and his assistant manager, Rob Haggerty. Also joining us, joining me, was Representative Tom Walsh joined us, Counselor Gamache, Counselor Higgins, Counselor Daigle, Counselor McGinn, Counselor Turco, Counselor Gould, and Committee Man Jared Hawkman also joined us. Again, it was a tour, and we, since we had a quorum and it wasn't, didn't have the, a recorder present, we refrained from any deliberations, so we didn't violate open meeting law. So what we did was, received a lot of information from the manager and the assistant manager of the needs of the skating rink, the design of the skating rink, and the purpose of this was to, you know, for the council to get a grasp of what we have going on there, its needs, and how we can help. But specifically, it was that we are continually, continued to be out of Title IX compliance with respect to the girls' locker room. And this has been an issue, ongoing issue, that we did look into back in 2018, and I know that the mayor, Benton Court, at that time, had written a communication to the Department of Conservation and Recreation and asked the commissioner to discuss options about maintenance and issues that we shared relative to the rink and the design and the girls' bathroom. And I do not know, we sent a communication, they were supposed to meet, I don't know if they did, but we can say that that effort really didn't result in anything, because they had been, the mayor put in the effort, but the result remains the same, that we're in the same condition with Title IX. That the girls' locker room has no toilet, has one shower. If the girls need to use the bathroom, they have to, in all their gear and skates, run across the rink to the, to the public restroom and share it with the public. And it is a state building, and I'm open to discussing, maybe my colleagues can offer some insight to it, but I know that Representative Walsh has a bill pending to have DCR, have state agencies follow federal law, which Title IX is federal law. You know, that's a weird one for me, that you have to create a law to have the state follow a law. So, you know, I'm open to have that one explained to me, but there is a bill pending to try and get that to happen. We also, just, what came up also was the fees that stuck out to me, that the fee for the public, for the, you know, high school teams or public hockey teams, they are charged the same amount as private for-profit teams. And so I thought that might be something we would want to discuss. So we had a different type of, it wasn't a committee meeting, it was rather a tour, so I'd like to open it up now for any discussion or questions, or any type of recommendations from my colleagues for motions that I can make out of this committee report, so that we can make a difference and hopefully not be talking about this in another eight years, that we haven't been able to offer equal services to girls up at the skating rink. So that's my report of progress, and I'd like to open it up, if it's okay, Madam Chair, for discussion from my colleagues that were there or who were not there, and any ideas that you may have in order for us to make a difference here.
Thank you, Counselor Manning-Martin, Counselor Gould, then Counselor McGinn, and then I think maybe Counselor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counselor Manning-Martin. You're staying on top of this as best you can, and it's an embarrassment, but thank you for pulling the tour together. I don't know at this point whose responsibility it is any longer. I would like to think that it's state-controlled, so therefore it's state responsibility to get the building up to code, but it is certainly an embarrassment, embarrassment for the city that we put our girls and any guests that are coming through what we were described, I mean, as Counselor Manning-Martin said, one in the ladies' room, public ladies' room, one, I'm sorry, in the locker room, which is half the size of the boys' locker room, there's one toilet. Am I correct?
There's one shower, small shower, and no toilet.
No toilet, one shower.
Whereas the boys had a communal shower and urinals, multiple urinals.
Again, I'd like to get a legal opinion to see whose responsibility it is at this point. I know the mayor has done what he feels he can do, not what he feels he can do, what he, he has been able to do, and it's now, I believe, in the legislature. But it is an embarrassment for those that were there. I was particularly horrified to think that my two granddaughters may someday play hockey and not get the same conditions as the boys. And I would like to get a legal opinion from the city solicitor as to what the recommendation is for us to do from this point on, but Manning, Counselor Manning-Martin, I give you credit for the diligence you've given this effort. I know we look back and probably say, "We should have done more, we could," but we still can do more, and we should be doing more. It is really an embarrassment, and I, I'd like an opinion from my fellow councilors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. I, yeah, I agree with everything Counselor Gould said, the, you know, the conditions there are, particularly in the women's locker rooms, are substandard, to say the least, and something does need to be done. I guess the law that Counselor Manning-Martin is referring to, that's, where she's gotten some direction from Representative Walsh, is a starting point. But another thing that came up, and Counselor Manning-Martin, you alluded to this, was that, you know, the fee structure was discussed, and it came to light that there's this monolithic fee structure. So essentially, whether you're PBD High or whether you're one of these private entities that, you know, have very high dues to be involved with those, they get the same, they get the same pricing. There's no preferential pricing for schools versus some of these private groups, which seems to be an exception based on what was, based on what we were told. So Counselor Manning-Martin, you asked if there was, if we could come up with some motions perhaps now, because we weren't really able to do that, given the nature of the tour versus the meeting, that perhaps we make a motion now to get, obtain a recommendation on a revised fee structure from the rink management and the director of finance. That would be my suggestion. You know, the rink manager, he seemed very much aware of these other structures that were out there. I think maybe if he was to try to work with the director of finance on that, we might, we might be able to come up with something that would be more advantageous for the city in terms of how we charge for the use of the ice time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman McGinn. I'm going to jump back to Counselor Manning-Martin.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that. Through you to address, Councilwoman McGinn, I will make that in the form of a motion. I would prefer if it's, it is referred directly to finance, though, so that we don't keep it in this committee if it needs to go to finance. So is that okay with you? I'll make that motion and just refer it to finance to be handled. It will save time.
Madam President, through you to Counselor Manning-Martin. That's fine.
Okay, I'll make a motion to have the rink manager and Mr. Gingras put together a proposal on the fee structure for private versus public fees charged at the skating rink, and refer that matter to finance. So moved.
You heard the motion. Counselor Welton, did you have a comment on that motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. My comment was actually directly related to that motion, so I think that's a good place to start, and separately, thank you very much for spearheading this. I really appreciate the effort there, Counselor Manning-Martin. I do think, however, it would be helpful if we engage outside consultation on this. I think for those of us who've been on the council for a number of years, we've seen during budget season, year in and year out, some challenges from the department identifying additional revenue sources, or having a good grasp on what potentially the current market may be. I think any of us that are familiar with youth sports understand, particularly on the private youth sport side, how lucrative those entities can be. So I think it would be probably money well spent to have a consultant come in and look at, you know, what's the, what's the market value, and how do we maximize the asset that we have there? Fully understanding that this is not our property, but we have a lease there for the next couple of years. How do we squeeze as much out of it as possible? My suspicion is they're going to say you have to start with the locker room, otherwise you're not going to be able to get top rate for teams coming in. But I agree with the sentiment of where we're going. I just think we need some outside help on this for, from individuals who specialize in this field in maximizing revenue from athletic facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Welton. Counselor McGinn.
Yes, this is, this is on the motion relative to the comments by Counselor Welton. I don't, I think bringing in a third party is, may make sense at some point. I'd like to have them take a shot at it first, without going to a third party. You know, they did seem very much aware of what the benchmarks were for other rinks. I think this might put a little pressure on them to act on that information. I have a high level of confidence in Mr. Gingras' maybe ability to kind of guide this to a better place. If we, however, if this isn't fruitful, and, you know, we don't see something near-term that looks to be more in line with what makes sense, given the market for this ice time, then I think that, then at that point, we would, in my opinion, would be a better time to draw in a third party.
Back to Counselor Welton.
Thank you. I'm fine with rescinding that based on the comments of Councilwoman McGinn. My one caveat would be that we request that they come up with a plan for the full year, because as we know, once the ice goes out, it's still a usable facility that I think is very underutilized, and we're leaving a lot of revenue on the table, particularly pickleball rentals, things like that. So I'm fine with, you know, holding off on consultation, but it'd be nice if we got a plan back from the manager and Mr. Gingras that was for the full year, not just for the ice time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Welton. Counselor Manning-Martin, are you okay with the revision to request the revised fee structure from the director of finance and skating rink manager before finance for a full year? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, yes. And if I may, to Counselor Welton, that's kind of why I kicked it to finance, so Councilwoman McGinn can kind of handle what you're talking about, because I know he will. Okay, thank you. And could I jump back to Counselor Gould? He made a recommendation to ask for legal opinion, so I'd like to make a motion to follow up on that, to make a legal opinion, request a legal opinion.
All right, we're going to...
We have a motion, sorry.
Take the first motion. Counselor Turco, did you have a comment on that motion, or you're just in the queue?
Yeah, I mean, I, through you, Madam President, I would like to comment on Counselor Welton's motion, because I was, I was rooting for you, counselor. I see it differently, Councilwoman McGinn. We have been beating our head against the wall for the better part of seven years with this guy, you know, and I have zero faith that he's going to come up with a fee structure that's going to help, or anything else that's going to help at that facility. I think that years ago, Counselor Sinowitz, at the time, had asked for a, an outside review of the golf course. At that time, I wasn't really sure if the golf course needed it. I believe that, you know, Peter does, Peter Cronin does an incredible job over there, and did back then also, but at a minimum, we got an outside report from a company that reviewed what we could do to increase revenues there, and I learned a lot from that, whether we implemented. I know actually Peter did try to implement some of those changes. I'm not sure that they worked, whether, you know, they were the cards, prepaid cards and things like that. But we learned a lot about running a golf course, which we are certainly not experts at, and apparently our management at the skating rink is not an expert at running a skating rink. So I do think that rather than me going to a budget in May, and hey, you know, I know I'm being a little harsh toward the manager there, but, you know, niceness is out the window here. We're losing, you know, I think again, over $100,000, you know, this year. It's insane to me that we just keep doing this over and over again, and we rely on him to make changes that he does not want to make and he will not make. He has told us time and time again, and we've given him suggestions to try to implement, and now we want to refer to finance so that we can give him a shake. No, Counselor, I agree with you. Get an outside company in here to review this. You know, I want to say it costs us 10 grand for the golf course thing. I hate to throw away 10 grand, but 10 grand with the hopes of recouping some losses here with some good suggestion, because ultimately, I think it's only a year that we have to make a decision whether we want to re-up this lease with the state, maybe two years, Council Turco, you were wrong. This is a great manager. This is the best he can do. Maybe he does, but I want to know that, and I want to have this information prior to, you know, budget time, so that the excuses stop. If I'm wrong, I'll apologize wholeheartedly to management. I don't think I am wrong. I think it's just mismanaged, and that we could do much better there. There's not a person here that could tell me that we have not said this and done this every single year, year after year, with no result, no change, no nothing. So, you know, what makes anybody believe it's going to happen now? If Council Walton doesn't want to make the motion, I will make the motion to request an outside review of the skating rink operations, and I would have to look at a better way to word that, Counselor, so if you could help me with that, certainly, but I'll make that motion, and if, you know, I hope you support it, because, like I said, we've been doing this for years, and it's borne no fruit. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Turco. Council Manning Martin.
Yes, I think you make very good points, both of you, and I don't disagree with you, Council Turco. I know you and I, every budget is kind of like Groundhog Day when the rink issue comes up, which is another reason why I put this in committee, to have these discussions, so that we can highlight the problems and come up with some solutions. But I don't think there's any reason why we can't do both. I think we can continue along the lines, because Mr. Jengris will be involved this time. That is something different, and I think he's got some ideas. So, and that we will get back faster, a recommendation. And then separately, we can dig deeper into better management. So, the fee structure issue, I think we can continue down the path we are, but then the management structure and any improvements in how it's run can be done parallel. And you can, you know, feel free to make that motion during motions, orders, and resolutions, because it's a good one. But I'd like to go forward with the motion that's on the floor.
So the motion is to internally have our Finance, send to Finance, a revision request for the fee structure. All right, I am going to actually ask for a roll call vote.
Councilors Turco-
Yes.
Gould-
Yes.
Gamache-
Yes.
Higgins-
Yes.
Manning Martin-
Yes.
Welton-
Yes.
McGinn-
Yes.
Rozignol-
Yes.
Melville-
Yes.
Daigle-
Yes.
Motion carries, 10 to 0.
Thank you. Council Manning Martin, we've got four other councilors in the queue to speak. Would you like to make that second motion, or would you like to hear from them first as the chairperson?
I'd like to, before I forget again, make the motion that Council Gould had suggested, which is to get a legal opinion from the city solicitor as to who is responsible in our situation, given that we lease from the state, who is responsible to provide equal access to girls in that state-owned building with respect to following Title IX and equal access. So moved.
On the motion, Council Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Council Manning Martin. Could I make that a co-motion, please?
Yes, a co-motion.
Thank you.
So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Council Roz-
Could I request a roll call, please?
Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Turco-
Yes.
Gould-
Yes.
Gamache-
Yes.
Higgins-
Yes.
Manning Martin-
Yes.
Welton-
Yes.
McGinn-
Yes.
Rozignol-
Yes.
Melville-
Yes.
Daigle-
Yes.
Motion carries, 10 to 0.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, everyone. Council Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Council Manning Martin. You said that State Rep Walsh was there. Did he give you any feedback regarding the state's position as far as the deplorable state of the municipal building, the rink?
Through you, may I respond?
Please.
We didn't discuss it because we couldn't deliberate, but his effort to put forward the bill is a direct response to the disgust he has in the facility and the lack of Title IX compliance.
So with that said, should there be a motion from this council to preemptively support any legislation that will encourage the improvements of that building?
Certainly couldn't hurt.
So one of my recommendations would be a motion to ask our state delegation, be it State Rep Walsh, Cairns, as well as Lovely, to help us with this building and help us with the situation that that building is in as far as its current state of affairs.
So moved, as a co-motion.
You heard the co-motion from Councilors Rozignol and Council Manning Martin. On the motion, Council Turco.
Yeah, on the motion. So I understand, I have confusion about, like, Counselor Walsh's role. So this is a Title IX issue. So it's Title IX is a federal law, correctly, that's already, you know, and I appreciate Counselor, excuse me, Representative Walsh's involvement, but do we need a redundant law to enforce the law already on the books about Title IX? I guess, I'm kind of asking rhetorical, but does anybody really know? Like, Title IX covers this already, so why is it being enforced on the federal level? It looks like Council Rozignol has an answer for it.
Council Rozignol.
Just for clarification of the reason for my motion, technically, it is a state building, so I want them to have buy-in to its improvement. So you're absolutely correct, Council Turco, in that it is a federal law that we have to be compliant, but where it's a state building, I want their assistance in doing what needs to be done to get that building the way it should be.
Through you, Madam President, Council Roz- Yeah, I had no issue with your motion at all. I just, my confusion is, you know, the redundancy in, well, the state's going to push, the state's going to push what? To enforce the law that's already in existence that technically it's their building, they're in violation of it, but, you know, so I'm just confused at that whole thing as to why we need a state law that already is covered under federal law. But, and I guess smarter people than I will figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Turco. Council Gamache, on the motion?
On the motion. I don't necessarily recall, but I may be wrong, but I think that our lease specifically states that any improvements have to be performed by the city. I.e., when we had to do the ice, it was $100,000 or something like that, that we had to put new concrete in, we had to purchase new HVAC equipment. I think that all fell on our dime. So this lease that we had was for a dollar back in '70, whatever it was. But I believe, and I'd like to get this clarified, because everybody's really not understanding, but my belief was that we have to pay for any improvements to that building under the lease agreement. I may be wrong, but I'm pretty sure I've heard that before, and I think that's something that we have to look at prior to even thinking about doing any repairs on that. And I had another thing, I'm going to get into it after this motion, because there's just some ambiguities that I don't want us to retain this lease, personally. It's a loser. That's why we're here. We haven't made anything on this place. We're not competitive. We will never be competitive if we don't bring a lot of things forward, and that means putting in Title IX. And the city's expense to do that is not conducive for us to stay in a lease agreement. That's my opinion. We shouldn't be in this position. It expires in '27. My philosophy is don't put another penny into that building, and when the lease is up, see you later. Get out from under it, because we're always taking money from the golf course to pay for this loser. I mean, we've had it for 40 years, 50 years, we've had this rink. I'd like to ask, have we ever made money? I don't think so, but anyways, I was going to throw it out there, and I don't want to get off the subject of this motion, but I'd like to see if the city could sublease it for the remaining two years to get out from underneath it, just so that we can say, and whoever takes it, the sublease, I hope they make a million bucks, but we're not doing it, and we can't do it based upon our hands being tied for what we're going through. So, my philosophy is, is that we shouldn't look at all these alternatives, let's look at the lease, because if we have to pump more money into that building because of Title IX, and because we own the, all of the repairs and the maintenance for that facility, it's a million-dollar renovation, Title IX. Just, I mean, we were all there, you're going to have to knock out walls and probably put in addition to the building. So, I'm not in favor of spending another nickel on anything that's got to do with this, the skating rink. Great idea, let's make our rates competitive. That's a start. But we're not going to make money from now until 2027. If we can sublet it, take another lease on, so be it till '27, and then just say, here you go, we're out. It was a dollar we gave, you know, to the state for that property. We've got our money's worth, but we've lost a lot of money. So let's just cut our losses, don't put any more money into it, let's see if we can stop the hemorrhaging for the next two years and walk away. And that's my opinion. I mean, John, you've been saying it for years, you know, it's a loser. The golf course has been subsidizing this venture for many years, and prior to the golf course, we were spending money on it. So, I don't know, I don't think we should be in this situation with the lease, the lease is up in '27, walk away, let somebody come in there, run it, do the work that has to be done to make it a viable facility, and good luck to them. It's still going to be located in Pevyty, and, you know, that's it. I'm not anti-hockey, but I'm anti-losing money for the city of Pevyty. So, that's my gist of the whole thing, but I'd also like to see that we send something to Legal after this motion, send something to Legal. Getting two questions. Are we the ones that are going to have to pay for any improvements if that's in the lease? And second of all, can we sublease to the remainder of the contract? But I'm sorry, I'm getting off the subject. Thank you.
Don't be sorry. Thank you, Council Gamache. On the motion, Council Turco.
Yeah, and it's difficult, we kind of, it's difficult to stay on one motion on this topic, because there's a lot, but I just wanted to say, like, Council Gamache has said something that I said a couple of years ago, and I got like some hate mail and some hate calls about it. Yes, I agree with Council Gamache, we are not, we should not be in the skating rink business, but I do agree with Council Gamache, and I believe he clarified, we want it to stay open, we want somebody to run it, we just don't want to run it, and we shouldn't be running it. To go back a little bit, Council McGinn and I, you know, years ago had talked about the combination of the enterprise funds, and that was in an effort to have the golf course help until the skating rink could kind of bring itself back a bit. It never did, I'm not confident it will. And at that time, that decision was made to combine those enterprise funds to support the skating rink. The golf course didn't have the additional bond, they were just, they were at the last year or two of their bond, and that was, it was a safety, safe thing to do, to combine those. But now the golf course has an additional bond, we had to buy the Rusolo land. I don't think the safety net is there anymore for the golf course, so, you know, again, if we don't cut our losses with this skating rink, at a minimum, we might have to look at separating the two enterprise funds, so that the golf course is self-sustaining again without the burden of the skating rink, if there's not the willingness to at least follow Council Gamache's recommendations and see about subleasing this for the two years. But I have a lot more to say, so I guess I'll stay in order and we can go from there. Actually, while I have it, I just want to say, I'm sorry, Council Manning Martin, this is the first thing I wanted to say, we're all in the same boat, we get an issue that's passionate for us, and then 17 other issues come up over the next two years, and we kind of lose our way, we're trying to put out fires everywhere. I knew seven or eight years ago, when you brought this up, Counsel, that this was a passionate issue for you with the Title IX violations there and issues, and I knew that it was going to come back, and I knew you weren't going to forget it, and I was so happy that you brought it back up again, and, you know, I'm not a big backslapper, but I will say, you know, any issue that you've ever brought before this, Counsel, you have not let linger, and you've brought it back and brought it to fruition, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Turco. Council Gould, on the motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to do the same thing, or I will do the same thing with Council Manning Martin. Thank you for bringing this up. Can you do us a favor? Can you collectively, so we don't get all lost in the weeds with motion here, motion there, motion there? Can you summarize what we're going to do tonight, what we're looking to do motion-wise? And I know you're, you know, you're the chair of this, and if you could help us with that.
Well, I think it is you all that are helping me to make that happen with your input, and that's how we're formulating the kind of collective motions. So I know that there is a motion on the floor. Is it Council Rozignol's input, that motion? Yeah.
It's a co with you and Council Rozignol. Do you want to move forward with that?
We also have a, sorry to interrupt, but we also have a motion looking for a legal opinion, not necessarily what you were asking for, but I don't want that to get lost either.
I believe we took care of that one, Council Gould, to go before Legal.
Approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On the motion, Council Walton.
Thanks, Madam President. And maybe just to clarify for Council Gould, I think you might be referencing Council Gamache's request to have a legal opinion if the expenses are on us, if the expenses of maintaining and providing upgrades to the building are on us. Also, the reference from, yeah, from Council Gamache was to sublease. I think that's a very astute suggestion and very good suggestion that we could move forward with. I think there's money to be made there. I agree that we're not the ones to kind of manage this, but I think if there is an opportunity to sublease, it'd be really good to find out all the details there. We could be in the driver's seat for the next two years and put in together a very competitive RFP that will still make sure the youth of Pevyty have full access to this, and we can put in the conditions that we want in there, but if we wait for two years, we're behind the eight ball. So, thank you for making that suggestion. I definitely would support that motion, and hopefully that clarifies that for you, Council Gould.
Thank you, Council Walton. So the motion on the floor is to reach out to the state delegation with some assistance on the building, correct? Okay, we heard the motion, everyone's had a chance to discuss, and Council Gamache would like to mention something.
Yes, I just received the word that we are responsible, which would make this motion basically null and void to send to the state to have them do something to the building. The city is responsible for all repairs and maintenance of that facility in the lease. So, I don't think that motion would be sent to the state when it's been told to me that we are 100% responsible for it all. I'll withdraw my motion.
With state approval.
Pardon?
With state approval. I have this-
Oh, does it say state approval?
Well, the old article, and this came up, and it was covered pretty extensively in 2018, is, yeah, the rink is owned by the Department of Conservation and Recreation and leased to the city. Any change to the footprint or repairs to the building would need state approval. So we're in a rock and hot, in between a rock and a hot place. So that motion is removed. So now I will make the motion for, to see if we can sublease it? No? I thought he just withdrew.
I just withdrew it.
He just withdrew it, sorry.
Oh, I didn't hear that. Okay, so that motion has been withdrawn.
Sorry, I jumped the gun. Sorry about that.
No worry, I couldn't hear. Council Manning Martin.
So then now I'll make a motion to request legal opinion if we can sublease for the remainder of the lease. And what was your other? It was two-part, wasn't it?
Well, the other one was, I was going to ask Legal on the interpretation of what the lease specifically says.
And why don't we get the lease, too?
Okay.
Yeah. So, if we can sublease and request a copy of the lease, so moved.
You heard the- You heard the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Now, I think we're, the floor is clear of motions. I'm gonna recommend, we've got, um, Councillors Turco, Welton, and Gamache that would like to speak, I'm gonna recommend we have everyone say their opinion and then any motions we do towards the end, and Counsel, Counselor Welton is all set, so I'm gonna move over to Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I think I've said everything I, I need to say throughout this, this process, but, uh, I am gonna move forward with the, uh, the motion for a ice rink consultant. If it passes, um, great, I hope it does pass, because I think we're, um, you know, stopping the inevitable. Um, I think that is what we need, I think it's what we need by June, um, hopefully we can get it, uh, before we make a budget decision, um, and, and it's a big budget decision, it's, it's, you know, uh, it's whether we separate the golf course out of the enterprise fund, it's whether we want to continue to fund, you know, um, an operation at the loss of $100,000 a year or more at times. Um, so, I'm gonna move forward with that motion, whether you wanna, you want me to do that now, but I, I would, I will do that now. I will make a motion, um, to request that the mayor enter, into a ice skate, uh, skating rink consultant contract to review the policies, procedures, and revenues of the skating rink and, and how better, uh, how to better maintain and operate that rink. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. On the motion, Counselor Welton.
My apologies, with a co-motion with Counselor Welton?
I'm back, I'm back, let's go.
This is a co-motion from Councillors Welton and Turco.
Thank you, Counselor Turco, and thank you, everybody, I think this was a great discussion, and I think we're all pretty much on the same page, you want to maximize the asset that we have available and, and figure this out. Um, the only small tweak I'd make there, Counselor Turco, is that I would look at it, uh, as an athletic facility on a year-round basis, just not a ice hockey rink consultant, but, so maybe an athletic facilities consultant, because I do think there is programming available when the ice comes out also. But thank you for making that motion.
I, I would be fine with adding that as a full-year operational recreation, full-year operating recreational facility, uh, also. Thank you.
Okay, we're clear on that motion, that co-motion by Councillors Welton and Turco. Any other discussion? I think the clerk picked it all up. If we're clear on it, I am going to have a roll call vote.
Counselor Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Gamache?
No.
Higgins?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rosignol?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to one.
Counselor Turco.
No further motions, thank you.
Counselor Gamache? No, we're still on the skating rink, you, you've said what you had to say. Any other councillors? Any other comments? Counselor Manning Martin, any other motions?
Absolutely not.
Uh, well, thank you for bringing this up, and I think, um, do you want to receive 8A on this?
Yes, motion to receive 8A on the suspension of the rule, so moved.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Manning Martin.
That is all, Madam Chair, and I thank my colleagues for their input.
Thank you very much, this was, this was very, um, productive. We're moving on to reports of committees from Legal Affairs. Counselor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Legal Affairs met early this evening, in attendance was myself as chair, Counselor Higgins, Counselor Melville, Counselor McGinn sitting in for Counselor Peach, Counselor Turco, all other councillors were present. We had two items on the agenda. The first one was the adoption of MGL Chapter 90, Section 14C, an Act Concerning the Safety of Schoolchildren Embarking and Disembarking on School Buses. We had the mayor as well as Maria Scary, Sherry speak before us. It was a very appropriate and moving presentation considering PBD was really kind of lead in moving this forward. The motion coming out of committee was to adopt a resolution to establish a school bus violation detection monitoring system program for illegal passing school buses. Intent, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts authorized municipalities to use a school bus violation detection monitoring system to enforce traffic violations pursuant to Section 14 and 14C of Chapter 90 of Massachusetts General Laws and imposing monetary liability on vehicles that illegally pass a school bus. Whereas, the prevalence of reckless and distracted driving threatened the health, welfare, and safety of pedestrians, including schoolchildren within this community. Whereas, increasing safety for schoolchildren entering and exiting school buses is of paramount importance to public safety, whereas leveraging new school technologies in a reasonable and equitable manner can support efforts to enhance traffic and pedestrian safety, whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts authorized municipalities to use a school bus violation detection monitor system to enforce traffic violations pursuant to Section 14 and 14C of Chapter 90 of Mass. General Law, and impose monetary liability on vehicles that illegally pass and stop school buses. Now, therefore, the city of PBD hereby accepts apical sections of the Massachusetts General Laws to establish a school bus violation detection. We also will adhere to their program, established installation and operation of school bus violations, review and issuance of citations, owner liabilities, citation requirements, and penalties, as well as contesting liabilities, record-keeping, and reports, use of data captured. And lastly, all recorded videos and photog, photographic images of other information, however stored or retained, obtained throughout the school bus violation detection monitor system, shall be the property of the city and shall not be used by vendors or manufacturers for any other purpose upon the expiration of any agreement with the vendor or manufacturer. All such videos and photography, images, and other information shall be delivered within 30 days of the city unless otherwise ordered by a court of competent jurisdiction. That was passed unanimously by the subcommittee, I now bring that to the full council. So moved.
You heard the motion to adopt the resolution just read by Counselor Rosignol? Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Gamache?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rosignol?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
Motion carries ten to zero.
Counselor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Our second item on the agenda was purchase of city-owned land, which was Zero Calumet Street, map number 104-131. That was sent to the department heads, that also passed unanimously, I now bring that before the council as a whole, so moved.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. That is my report of committee.
Thank you, Counselor Rosignol. Moving on to the Finance Committee report, Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening, present for the committee were Councillors Gamache, Gould, Manning Martin, Turco, and myself as chair, also present were Councillors Welton, Daigle, Higgins, Melville, and Rosignol. Uh, we had several items on the agenda, the first item was transfer of funds, Brookfield Recreation Improvement, $193,624.36, that was presented by, to the committee by Mr. Jengris, and, uh, this was explained that, uh, this was brought forward by the Director of Parks and Recreation, uh, and Forestry and Farm Management requested this transfer, uh, out of the revolving fund, uh, for, and, to install a new play yard, um, and to, to fund that improvement at Brookspie Farm. With that explanation, uh, a motion was made by Counselor Gould as follows, move to approve transfer request, Brookspie Farm Revolving, account number 2600000035603, in an amount of $193,624.36, to Brookspie Recreation Improvements, account number 30009421585452025000006020, in an amount of $193,624.36. Madam President, that passed the committee unanimously, I now bring it for consideration of the full council, so moved.
You heard the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote.
Counselor Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rosignol?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. The next item on the agenda was transfer of funds, CPC land acquisition, golf course 132.45 acres, in an amount of $270,000, and CPC land acquisition, DBSC 76.3 acres, in an amount of $400,000. This was brought to us by, uh, Mr. Jengris, and it was explained that this first request was, uh, part of a multi-year commitment, uh, by the Community Preservation Committee, uh, to, uh, partially fund the land acquisition of the golf course in the first case, and for the DBSC land acquisition in the second case. Uh, so, as far as the, uh, uh, golf course acquisition, uh, this was the first such transfer being requested, in the case of the DBSC property, this is the second, uh, such transact, uh, uh, transfer request, uh, to be requested, uh, as part of their multi-year commitment. Uh, with that explanation, uh, we also had, uh, his honor, the mayor, there, uh, to respond to questions, he also, uh, indicated, uh, his, uh, belief as to how fortunate the city is to have the Community Preservation, uh, uh, fund available for such significant, uh, programs, uh, projects such as this. Uh, with those, uh, explanations by Mr. Jengris and comments, uh, from the mayor, uh, a motion was made by Counselor Gould to approve transfer request, account number 2700000033021, CPC open space, in an amount of $270,000, to account number 2701811585622025000512, CPC land acquisition, golf course 132.45 acres, in an amount of $270,000, and from account number 2700000033021, CPC open space, in an amount of $400,000, to account number 2701811585622023000512, CPC land acquisition, DBSC 76.3 acres, in an amount of $400,000.
You heard the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote.
Counselor Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rosignol?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Counselor McGinn.
Next item on the agenda was transfer of funds, CPC cemetery, cemetery restoration, Old South, in an amount of $3,920. Uh, this was brought to us by Mr. Jengris, and explained that this was a CPC request to fund a, uh, small historic preservation project at the Old South burial ground, specifically the, the replacement of a historic gate, uh, on the property. Uh, with that explanation, Counselor Gould made the following motion, move to approve transfer requests, account number 2700000033022, in an amount of $3,920, CPC Historic Preservation, to account number 2701811585632024, CPC Cemetery Restoration, Old South, in an amount of $3,920. That motion passed the committee unanimously, Madam President, I now bring it for consideration of the full council, so moved.
You heard the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote.
Counselor Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rosignol?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. The next item on the agenda was transfer of funds, Community Preservation Act, open space, in an amount of $1 million. This was brought to us by Mr. Jengris, and explained that this was essentially a, administrative, uh, transfer within the CPC to allow for the funding of these previously approved programs, moving it from the unreserved balance, uh, into the, and committing the funds to the open space, uh, account. Uh, with that explanation, Counselor Gould made the following motion, move to approve transfer requests, account number 2700000033011, Community Preservation Act, unreserved fund balance, in an amount of $1 million, to account number 2700000033021, Community Preservation Act, open space, in an amount of $1 million. That motion passed the committee unanimously, I now bring it for consideration of the full council, so moved.
You heard the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote.
Counselor Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rosignol?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Counselor McGinn.
Next item on the agenda was transfer of funds, Community Preservation Act, open space, in an amount of $24,734.80. Again, this was brought to us by Mr. Jengris, uh, and, uh, he explained that this was a request to, uh, return some money from two completed projects, uh, some excess funds, uh, to return them to the, uh, open space account, so that that money could be utilized for other projects going forward. Uh, with that explanation, Counselor Gould made the following motion, move to approve transfer request from account number 270018115856220190379, CPC Center School Playground, in an amount of $12,325.72, and from account number 270018115856220190380, CPC Playground Updates, in an amount of $12,409.09, for a total of $24,734.81, to account number 2700000033021, Community Preservation Act, Open Space, in an amount of $24,734.81. That motion passed the committee unanimously, and I bring it for consideration of the full council, so moved.
You heard the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote.
Counselor Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rosignol?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Counselor McGinn.
Next item on the agenda is transfer of fund cable fund expense, in an amount of $188,287.88. This is a routine quarterly matter that comes before the Finance Committee. Uh, in this instance, this is money from, uh, Comcast, uh, which is received by the city and, uh, ultimately transferred to PBD Access Television. Uh, motion was made by Counselor Gould to approve, uh, receipts, reserve cable fund, account number 2700000033017, in an amount of $181,287.88, to cable fund expense, account number 2700000053007, in an amount of $188,287.88. This motion passed the Finance Committee unanimously, and I bring it for consideration of the full council, so moved.
You heard the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none?
This motion passed the Finance Committee unanimously. I now bring it for consideration to the full council. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilors Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. The last item on the agenda was transfer of fund, cable fund expense, in an amount of $13,157.62, and $2,923.92. Similar to the last item, this is a quarterly transfer of funds related to cable expense. In this case, it's the RCN component. With that, motion was made by Councilor Turco to approve Receipts, transfer request from Receipts Reserve Cable Fund, quarter four, 2024, account number 2700000033017, in an amount of $13,157.62, and account number 2700000033017, in an amount of $2,923.92, for a total of $16,081.54. To Cable Fund Expense, account number 2700000053007, in an amount of $13,157.62, and account number 2700000053007, in an amount of $2,923.92, for a total of $16,081.54. Madam President, that motion passed the Finance Committee unanimously. I now bring it for consideration to the full council. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilors Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive and approve Item 9A, Banner Request, St. Facilio's 5 Paleologic Street, St. Clair of Assisi Catholic Community, 32 Ellsworth Road. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive and approve Item 9A, Banner Request, St. Facilio's 5 Paleologic Street, St. Clair of Assisi Catholic Community, 32 Ellsworth Road. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive and approve Class II Motor Vehicle License Renewal for 2025, Car Depot, One Willard Street, Unit 11 and 12, in Elite Motor Cars 93 Lynn Street. And before you take a roll call on that, I'm just not a roll caller, before we approve that, I just want to mention that the owner of Elite is here tonight, just in case anybody had any questions or concerns for him. And I want to say thank you for sitting through all this. He did have some issues in the past, which I think have been resolved. And I think it's great that you showed up here, just in case. So thanks so much. So moved.
Thank you, sir. You've been very patient sitting before us, so we appreciate that. That means a lot. You heard the motion to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Turco.
No further motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Councilor Gould.
Make a motion for Councilor Gamache to change the ordinance to have a stop sign at Page Street onto Baldwin Street. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And lastly, but certainly not least, congratulations to the Peach family. Stephanie had a baby boy, Wesley David, I believe, right? Yes. Congratulations, Wesley David and Stephanie. So moved. It's not a motion.
We're on a roll. Congratulations to the Peach family.
No further motions. Thank you.
Councilor Higgins.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, I would like to receive and approve Item 9B, an application for a block party at 12 Hammerick Road for August 16, 2025. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Higgins.
Yeah, I'd like to also extend congratulations to the Peach family. They're now outnumbered. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Higgins. Councilor Manning Martin.
No motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Manning Martin. Councilor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to thank PBD Police and Fire Department. As coincidence would have it, a good friend of mine, his wife and children got in a bad accident today in the shared left-hand turn lane on 114. And PBD Police and Fire first of the scene. Thank God they're okay. Obviously, 114 continues to be a challenge for many of our residents and people traveling along that road. But huge thanks to PBD Police and Fire for helping them out, which could have been a very difficult, challenging day, to say the least. But they're all, they're doing okay and really appreciative of their quick response. Also, with that, I'd like to thank, congratulate Counselor Peach and thank her for having her child. Congratulations, Counselor Peach. It's been a long night. But congrats to her and AJ, the new addition to their family. They're an awesome family, and it's great to see them have another little one. So that's it for me. Thanks so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Welton. Thank you to PBD Police, PBD Fire, and the Peach family. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Late Communication, 1, and refer to Finance. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to draft and advertise, amend Section 19-94, the Code of Ordinances of the City of PBD, to add Winter Street, easterly side from Oak Street to Mason Street, and Winter Street, westerly side from 1.100 feet south of Oak Street to 1.140 feet south of Oak Street, and also to amend Section 19-141 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of PBD to add Winter Street, southerly from Oak Street to Mason Street. On the motion, this short, narrow section of Winter Street between Oak and Mason Street's been a problem for some time. Both the police department and I have received a great deal of feedback from residents and business owners on the street about their various concerns. Last December, we had a neighbor meeting that involved residents, business owners, and the police department. And Councilor Turco was also participated in that meeting. I thank him for being involved. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the idea of improving parking and traffic flow. In January, the police department established on a trial basis the parking restrictions that were formulated at that neighborhood meeting, and those temporary measures remain in effect. The feedback on the temporary measures has been really positive, and the police department has now recommended making these measures permanent by ordinance change accordingly and putting forward these motions tonight. I'd like to thank Captain Richards and Sergeant Hawkins for their involvement with improving the situation on Winter Street.
You heard the motion to draft and advertise. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. This last, this is more, not a motion. Similar to what you heard from our colleagues, Councilor Gould and Councilor Melville, I'm announcing this evening that I won't be seeking reelection this year. It's been a tremendous honor to represent the citizens of Ward 2 these past many years. And I want to thank the residents of Ward 2 for their trust and support. As other councilors have said in the past, being a city councilor ends up involving your family in various ways. And I want to give special thanks to my family, and in particular, to my wife, Jeanette, for always being there for me throughout this journey. I'm really blessed to have served with a really great group of past and current councilors over the years. And I'd like to believe that through this collective public service, PBD and hopefully Ward 2 are a little better off for it. I plan to serve out the remainder of this term with the same level of commitment I have always made to the position, and I look forward to the balance of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McGinn. I almost fell off my chair there. I'm going to go to Councilor Melville, and then I'll go back to you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, Council President. I just wanted to thank Councilor McGinn for all the service. I've known you both as a constituent and as a colleague, and I remember a conversation in the South PBD Library parking lot in 2013. And the Ward 2, we were very fortunate. I've, we've had, you and I have had a lot of experiences together, whether it be, you know, PBD Pride Pickup Day, and July 4th in the morning, getting ready. And I know how much work you've put into the ward and your job here, and you and your family sacrificing that. And thank you very much for your time in serving our community.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Councilor Melville. Councilor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Peter, I got to tell you, I've been on the council a long time, and whenever councilors choose not to run again, and they retire, or whatever we want to call it, there's always a void left from that long-serving councillor. And yours is going to be a huge void because, and no one's going to argue with me. We can go through our packet, and if it, oh, Peter's got that. Peter's got that. Peter's got that. Oh, this is me. So, so, you know, you really keep things moving along, and we just know you're going to really dig down into finances and always doing what you think is right. Just, there will be quite a void. And the council is clearly going to be different next year. They're dropping like flies. But that is a void that we're going to have to fill, and the remaining councilors are going to have to pick up the slack in that area. And I wish us all luck. But you will be missed, and I thank you for all your service.
Thank you very much, Council Manning Martin.
Councilor Manning Martin was much more articulate than me. Selfishly, I have to admit that I'm very proud to have had you on the Finance Committee while I was president. So I'm very fortunate. Council Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo the sentiments of our fellow councilors. And Pete, it's been a pleasure serving with you. It always kind of cracks me up at the end of a meeting when we hear you announce all those zeros, zero, 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 zero. So aside from your tremendous value to the council, you're a great friend, you're a great colleague, and wish you nothing but the best. It's certainly going to be big shoes to fill, but very appreciative of the time that I've had to serve with you. So thank you very much.
Councilor Gould.
Thank you very much. Pete, I never saw it coming. I didn't see it coming. Going to miss you, because neither one of us will be serving, but maybe we can get together and watch a meeting or two. But Pete, you brought Uncle Sam to Ward 2. Uncle Sam on stilts, I'll never forget that. You did a lot of great things. You became my friend, so I thank you for that, and I wish you well. Thank you, Tom.
Councilor Turco.
Yeah, thank you. Definitely a tough one, Pete. I think you were the council president when I got on the council the first time, and honestly, I wouldn't know as much as I do from what I'd learned from you in that first year. You taught me a lot, and you taught me a lot about being diligent and thorough, and Council Manning couldn't have said it better. We do do that, Pete. We do go through and say, Pete will take care of that. And I think that, as far as that void you mentioned, Council Manning, it is a huge void to this council, to the point where, you know, I would challenge the remainder of us to step up our game. It's a huge loss through all three councilors. But Pete, thank you for everything you taught me over the last decade, and I appreciate it, and I wish you well. Kind of happy for you. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Council Higgins.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I'm certainly surprised as everyone else is. You will truly be missed, as Council Manning Martin said. There'll be a huge void. As Councilor Turco said, we're all going to have to pull our bootstraps up and try to fill the void that you're going to leave us. But I couldn't be more happy for you, couldn't thank you more for the service that you provided the city, and also for me personally, all the added advice that I've received since I joined. I truly appreciate that, and I will still be contacting you throughout the year and hopefully the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. No motions this evening. But actually, I'm going to backtrack a little bit. I was unable to make the last meeting, so I'm going to start my, actually, my words with Councilor Melville. You're going to be missed on this council. You and I came onto this council together. We kind of grew up on the council together, so your knowledge and your experience, I'm going to miss. And then to my other counterpart, Mr. McGinn, both Councilor Turco, as well as Manning Martin, said it best. You are the most prepared and one of the most diligent councilors I've served with. I think that your knowledge and your experience is really going to be missed on this council. And I appreciate you as a councillor, as well as a person, and even more as a friend. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you, Councilor Rozignol. Councilor McGinn, were you done? Did you have any other surprises?
No further motions.
Not for tonight. Thank you. Councilor Rozignol, you're all set. Councilor Melville.
Did we take 7A and, okay, and that's going to go to Finance Committee? I thought Councilor McGinn got it. I guess.
I may have missed those, too. So if you could refer those to Finance, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, under suspension of the rules, move to receive and forward to Finance Committee's 7A and B. So moved.
Would you mind receiving and advertising 7A?
So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Did we get everything?
And on 7B, you heard the motion to receive. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. And any other motions, orders, or resolutions? Councilor Melville.
No further motions or resolutions. Thank you.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.